Just for the...
All right, y'all ready? Um, like to call the board of supervisors to order as always. Let's start with what we do from home side.
Like we're going to just sit by United States of America. And if you're public for this stands, right nation, out of town, invisible, we're going to be the fastest for all.
All right, thank you. Um, we do have a quorum. We have an agenda in front of us. The only ones that I have to change are item, uh, we don't have any supplemental appropriations there. And we can send it in there though, and we can strike that. And number nine under, nine under old business, Madison County Administration Center renovation project procurement. Let's go to close session with probably action of certification. Bales having anything we need to add? What's the question for the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second?
Motion to move and, uh, move exactly to further discussion here in all unfair circumstances, saying aye, 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 put the same sign. All right, um, as always, let's start with general public comment. General public comment. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, good afternoon. My name is Renee Baupour and this is my husband, James Howe, and we're co-owners of Possum Store, which is a corner of, uh, Blue Ridge Park and Lindsey Lane, directly across from the Swinging Bridge on Lindsey Lane. And we're here, we wanted to bring something, something to the board's attention. We have a petition, 750 signatures, to save the bridge in Craigsville. It came to our attention several weeks ago that VDOT is bringing this up for consideration for either renovation or demolition. And it was our understanding after speaking directly with VDOT, does not meet requirements for historic designation to help save the bridge. And I wanted to bring several items to the board's attention, one of them being that first of all, if the, uh, the bridge was built in 1948, yet there are bridges on the National Historic Register from 1949. It's a bridge, uh, the Dorina Bridge, 1949, the Irish Bend Bridge, 1954, and the Lowell Bridge in 1953. And this is just to mention a few on the historic register. Another reason for the demolition of the bridge, um, according to VDOT, is because it's, they say it's very rarely used. And as being directly across the street from the bridge, we can say that it's used a lot, it's used often, it's used by people visiting the area, it's used by fishermen, both local and visiting, it's used by the people in the neighborhood, and it's used and respected by the community. And I just wanted to read something, just to have it on, and my husband has an intervention that he would like to give to you, but we felt that it was important to make, um, bring this to your attention prior the meeting on the 27th. So, historic properties give communities a sense of identity and stability, adding richly to their quality of life. These historic places, the houses, stores, train stations, warehouses, iron furnaces, canals, factories, monuments, landscapes, and bridges are woven into the fabric of our daily lives. They are part of what shapes the unique character and spirit of each community. Together they defined this place we call Virginia and us as Virginians. Preserving these resources greatly contributes to the vitality of our cities, towns, and villages, and ensures the reminders of our heritage will remain for future generations. And this is from the DHR website and is speaking to some of the conditions and ideas we find the historic designation on these landmarks. So, I wanted to thank the board, thank the board and Chair for hearing us. And my husband would like to give you just some further information and some copies of the petition.
This is a, this is a presentation, this should give you all the information that we need. We posted a couple things on Facebook and, uh, as you can see by the arrows, the process is bounding. This, yes. I guess, at this point, we have copies of 650 signatures on the petition. We have another hundred that we haven't copied yet. So, I guess the point that we would like to make here is that, um, this bridge is not used by hundreds of people. It's actually used by thousands of people. It's, um, people come from all over Virginia. It's important to hundreds of Madison County residents. It's, uh, the only way to cross the river from all the way from Banquo to Quaker Run. So, when the road is closed, it's used every day by many people. And it's a, it's a real treasure in Madison County. So, if you click through the handout I just gave you, you'll see some information on that. And in fact, the, um, little photographs, photographers use it on bridges pictures they take in there every year. There's, um, a map in, in Madison County, there's only three bridges that have, that run this, uh, bridges.com, which is a national register for historic bridges. Two of those bridges are the Pink Ridge and Stillburg Bridges, the third is White Oak Canyon. So, these are well-known bridges that are known all over the country. People come here just, just to experience those bridges. So, we clearly do not want them demolished. And we really, by support supervisor, by understanding that on the 27th, VDOT will give a presentation, not options for the bridge, we just want to give that input now because they've already closed it, but that info is, and we thought it was really important to be proactive in, in, about the board now how important this is to the community prior to this meeting. Thank you very much for doing that.
All right, other general public comment. Other general public comment. All right, um, we do have this evening a public hearing, um, on the Madison County Rescue Squad, and specifically the MOU, which I'm frankly happy to report that we are very, very close on. Grayson just came in, not Miss Grayson, excuse me. Uh, Noah Hillstrom, our EMS director, just came in with the latest version. There was, I don't see him right now. Um, Derek, behind the computer, great. Um, I hope these pass out to the squad leadership, the MOU. It's addressed, we've had multiple meetings at this point trying to figure out a solution to the changing business model of EMS. We think we're seemingly close, and that's good for everybody in Madison County. Anybody else have anything they would like to say about this before we open up to the public? All right, open to the public. Yes, sir.
I'm Steve Grayson, uh, president of the Rescue Squad. Again, on behalf of the squad, I, I too want to thank the board for negotiation. As I said last night, there's been countless man-airs put into this, uh, lots of phone calls, lots of emails, and quite honestly, on my behalf, a whole lot of sleepless nights. And I'm glad we're close to an end. I've not had a chance to review the document. Couple things of concern that we have, and I hope that, that they've been addressed is, one was how the membership was going to be fast-tracked into running. Uh, and the other issue that was brought up last night, and Ms. Huckman was at our meeting, um, and I asked the board we're considering, and this is probably new to, to the balance of you, is that we have some period of delay in implementing this. According to Noah's own statement last night, that he anticipated probably four to six months, uh, based on getting our members up to speed on being able to run. So, that creates quite a gap in coverage for the county. What I would propose is there'd be some delay of maybe a minimum of four months of, of implementing this to allow our members to continue running as we are, and then it's at a date agreed upon, by that time, all of our members will be cross-trained and ready to be dual-affiliated and move on. There was a consensus vote last night, uh, our meeting was continued until tomorrow night, and the consensus vote was if we could get out, work a few of the details out, which apparently it's already been done, that this, this matter could be resolved tomorrow. But I would ask that you consider that one point. Thank you.
Who would like to go next? We're on the public hearing for the MOU that pertains to the Rescue Squad. Public comment. We have, who's the president?
I'm Paul Cook with the Rescue Squad, and I appreciate all of you that came today with this squad. We've been around for quite a while, and I, I just want to give you a little information on why we started, how we started. I was there, you know, a long time. But anyway, uh, a little bit of the history and why did, why did we form a Rescue Squad in Madison? So, let me start the fact that I was a JC member. I don't know how many of you are, you guys are JC people. Back, back in 1962, that was the going thing. You almost had to beg to get into JCs because it was very difficult, that was a problem. And so, I got into the JCs and one day I was going up to Grayson's Lodge, I think it was swimming, maybe it was something like, anyway, I was going up there. Between Craigsville and, and we all were sitting very, uh, serious, there was a automobile accident, four-door car, with four teenage boys in it, it ran into a sycamore tree. So, all of you know how tough a sycamore tree is, you just don't hear. But anyway, when I got there, I stopped, I was first, all the doors were open, these guys ran all over the place. So, I did what I could, and someone else came by and I said, well, you know, now two of Joining Counties have a Rescue Squad, why don't we call one of them? Because these guys was in bad shape. So, we did, we called on the Joining Counties. It took a, a little over an hour to get there, and I can, I can understand that, I'm not beating on that because these were armed kids, just like we have them. And once they got there, everything was taken care of, and they transferred. So, we've been working for 57 years. I started out in 63. We had a JC meeting right after that, and I was a member of the JC. I was president, we talked about a Rescue Squad. So, we voted on to have a Rescue Squad. It was 100% votes in that favor. So, we started to organize a Rescue Squad, and someone that was really helping with that was Marjorie Lamar, all of you remember Marjorie. They had the drugstores, and they were into things that, you know, you could use. So, we organized one, and we all, we all got a toolbox, and we all kind of opened up, and we put our first aid supplies in. And so, we started to get organized. And we had a lot of help from Marjorie, she came, she gave us that first, first aid classes. And they were 25, 27 men, and the only thing that you learned was the ABCs, the pathways, and the surfboards. And we realized then, that's really all you needed to know to be on this squad.
Can you speak into microphone more, please? Yeah, no, I apologize for interrupting, please proceed.
And so, we started, and I can remember very well, on a Sunday, our suppliers was in the house, everybody at the courthouse, in the drawer, we were about to get some supplies. So, we all stayed there and out there. And I remember Mr. Gibson with the bank, I don't know how many of you all remember him, yes, though. I had a nice six Chevy Chevrolet, and he comes by and he said, Paul, said, that is a beautiful car you got there. I said, well, thank Mr. Gibson, you're the one that owns it anyway. That was the story back then, you didn't buy a car unless you couldn't, or didn't want to buy it. Madison County Rescue Squad is much more than a Rescue Squad. As the, after serving as an EMT running member for 57 years, I will state my reasons for the county supervisors to continue to main volunteer Rescue Squad. Maintaining a Rescue Squad is very expensive operation. We're fortunate to have received many, many donations from the local people of the Rescue Squad. We're not hurting for money because the people have supported us all along. But we've done all these things, anything that the people asked for, we did. I can remember on Saturdays, Marjorie Lamar had a station wagon, an old station wagon, and if somebody didn't want to ride in the ambulance, we'd go there Saturday, pick them up, turn them to the hospital. And, and you know, that, that's the way the volunteers operate. Can the county afford not to have volunteers? Well, let me, let me say this too. I wrote this before some of our meetings, and they're going very well, and that's great. So, anything I say in here may not really return to what's going on now. Uh, can the county afford not to have a volunteer squad who receives no financial help? We don't get paid for this. I was lucky to have a job that I didn't have to not be a volunteer and not get paid for. And that was 24 hours a day that you're on duty. Receive no financial help, but want to serve and acquire knowledge in order to seek a good paying job with the hair care field, field, as many of our paid personnel have done. And one big thing good about the Rescue Squad is we had members, and we could do their EMT and the classes to get them certified, to get on the horse crew. And that has happened many times with their squad. At one time, we had probably six or seven cardiac techs, and all at once we just, techs kind of disappeared, and you know where they went, don't you? They went eight. And that, that was a good thing, we felt good about that. And that still goes on in the county. Let me be clear, we respect and value the work of our paid squad members. They are a must to have, don't undercut them, because they are a must to continue our work. Madison County citizens are much safer with personnel who have advanced medical training. Each member who joins the Rescue Squad has a reason for doing so, and I just shared the reason that I had to join the squad. Always wondered why so many people, and back in that time, the older folks at home, if something happened to them, they didn't want to go to the Rescue Squad, so they laid there. I remember there was one guy that would ride around on his bicycle like this, and I often wondered what his problem was. Well, come to find out, he broke both arms, and he never went to get it fixed. And that happened many times, especially the older folks at the county. But being a member of the squad, I had been into many homes that I knew they needed this, and they weren't going to go in the ambulance. So, we did what we had to do, and even maybe sometimes called the law office to make sure that they went to the hospital, but we didn't leave them there. So, that was the reason I got involved 57 years ago. The county's, the squad has served the county well for not only rescue work, but for standbys, football games, Woodbury Forest football games, horse shows. How many days have I been to two days at a horse show? Because, in the ambulance, so we would be there to see that. And you know, we got, we got, we got money for that, they give us donations. We go to Woodbury Forest football games, we get donations, and that's how we got our money. Well, we got it from, in front of the supervisors, too, as y'all do, they give us a lot of money. We couldn't, we could not agree with their deal. Uh, and also, one time, our squad got recognized as one of the best Rescue Squads in Virginia, which was good. We had the same certifications, uh, I guess, as the paid do, the state certifies us as Rescue Squad people and running members. And one good thing about the volunteer, and I know the paid people, they're great and they do a great job, but that is their day's work. The difference between that and the volunteer member, they could be the next door neighbor, they're there 24 hours a day. There are a lot of them out there. And back years ago, well, not too many years ago, we had the first responder program. And when that call came in, you went to the scene, you went to where the problem was, and then the squad came in. We also, I had a satellite, um, unit in, in that, it lasted for, around 20 years. Got to the point though, with that paid people and that extra cardiac care people, we figured if that call came in, it would be best for them to leave at Madison, and not for me to, not for us to leave at Ellen, go up to Nethers, find out somebody was having a heart attack, and then have to call the Rescue Squad. So, we shut the satellite down, and we all came back to Madison. Home facility, we have an home facility, we've always had an home facility. These people worked so hard at sales and different, offered dinners and things like that, it was unbelievable how they worked just to be there to furnish us some money. And many years, they have donated as much as $20,000 selling hot dogs and hamburgers as, and you imagine how much work that was. Again, let me clear, we wanted to recognize the page, but we have worked together for the last several years, we had a matter of building, we ate with them, we played cards with them, we watched TV with them, and it was great, everything was going good. And they, they are so important and necessary for our county, but as you know now, you don't have volunteers like we had back in 1960s, everybody wanted to go on Rescue Squad. That's not the case now, there's more things going on in their lives that they don't have time for, especially the workplace. I asked the supervisors to create a system whereby the volunteers and the paid members can answer emergency calls for the benefit of the citizens of Madison County. This has been successful for the past several years. These are volunteers in the county that want to be a part of the Rescue Squad system. There are many career doors open that can be opened for these individuals, please give them the opportunity. And like I say, uh, when this first started out, I was amazed that what, when the volunteer Rescue Squad was expected to be, or what they were expected to be like, there was no way we could exist at the beginning. And this has been a working force, I, I haven't been in the state, in Wayne, otherwise that we speak, but now I got, got the information back there. And this has been going on, and we still, as Jack knows, we still have points that we got to get across, because if not, it's really going to affect us to be able to be a part of the volunteers with the squad. One of the options we probably had to start with will not work. Yeah, they wanted volunteer squad, what they wanted us to do, to do the football games, to do the horse shows, and not be a part, I could be wrong, I could be wrong, and not be a part of going out here and administering to the people. Nobody's going to join Rescue Squad to go and sit two days at a horse show, and it may be if someone got injured, we might have to call a doctor to come get them to the hospital. I'm not so sure that was intended there, but that, that was a rule that's kind of going around. So, now, I think we at the point that we can continue to be a Rescue Squad, and we got to have the paid people, and they are some of the best. And I say no reason why we get certified by the state and we can't continue being the same Rescue Squad. We have been the best 57 years. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for this opportunity, thank the board as well. Um, in reviewing the document was just handed to me in appendix A, um, I can, I can say that we do have a pretty good resolution to the, to the MOU, updated MOU. And I want to thank Noah Hillstrom, he has worked very hard on this, along with all of us. Um, I want to thank you and Ms. Huckman as well, y'all have dedicated a lot of your hours to the public as far as sitting down with us and trying to work this out. Thank the citizens of Madison County that showed up, um, and please continue to support us, and that's what we need, and thank you all again for the, from the board.
Who would like to go next? People are thinking about it, this MOU essentially does, combines the two organizations in running EMS call, um, and puts our EMS director at the head of all of them, working in conjunction with Mr. Dotson, Mr. Grayson, the volunteer. This should enable some efficiency and some accountability on the side. Um, we value tremendously the history the Rescue Squad has, and the great volunteer, Mr. Weaver told me the other night about a leaf spring that they used to, and wrap tape around the end of it, and they used to cut the tots off cordwood.
I should show it to you, we got the pressure from you.
And you should hang on. The business of EMS has changed tremendously, and not just here in Madison County. The requirements and the, the requirements are just unbelievable, and the volunteers we have that are running and have done it over a long period of time, it just speaks volumes about them. We've addressed a lot of the issues. The county has gone ahead and with agreement with the volunteers, that we'll start handling the maintenance of vehicles. That should help a little bit, will also take on the cost of that. Business of EMS in Madison County is going to continue being expensive for multiple different reasons. We've also talked about the, uh, revenue recovery, which we've committed that we will pass along on DLS calls back to the Rescue Squad, $100,000 donation, also committed that we pass along to the Rescue Squad. The, bear with me. The question came up also about if volunteers were available on non-scheduled events, if potentially they could come in and work with us, that's kind of what we'll call. I think when all of us heard that, it was kind of exciting. That's the whole name of the game, that's what volunteer, Rescue Squad, volunteer, fire, that's the mission. We do have, I think, one more issue that needs to be kind of sorted out, and it's not at Mr. Dotson level, or Mr. Grayson, I think it's between Mr. Barry, the squad's lawyer, Mr. Greg, our lawyer, and the bail lawyer, which is the liability side. I think we've got some language in there that starts to shore it up. Mr. Greg earlier today was talking about code section, stated it kind of gave us a little bit of protection, gave the volunteers some protection based on state law. We think this is a good document, this will continue both organizations working together and adapting to the time in which we're living, especially now with COVID. Appreciate tremendously the leadership the squad has done. This is kind of where we're at, we have talked about it, we're going to talk about it in the end of close session, make sure everybody in the room has read on this. We think we have good document, we see the building frankly as a separate part of Rescue, not really being addressed at this point. Signing this MOU will bring great goodwill from the board of supervisors and how we proceed with that building side. We know that there is no good reverting deadline, it's not going to be net. I know personally, I'd rather see a building be built responsibly and not built in a rush with something that is not what we need. with something that is not what we need for the people. Right now, that really is not on the table. We could address providing, providing coverage for our citizen base. That is the importance, the original mission of EMS, both paid and volunteer. We need to trust the building, but we need to focus on providing care. That's the name of the game at this point. I'm sorry to drag on, we appreciate everybody. Anybody else have anything they'd like to throw in there?
You know, I would if I could.
All right, Joe Mack.
I'm Joe Mack, I live in Allen. Mr. Coates just said the rescue squad didn't need money. Well, we're giving them 100 grand. What are, what are they getting out of that insurance recovery? Another 140,000. We've already given them $600,000 for the building. These ambulances apparently from that spreadsheet MJ gave out, they're like $270,000. We got to get a building and house these expensive vehicles. And I don't see how volunteers can afford to buy $270,000 vehicles and then another 10 grand supply. And I know this is going to sound really harsh, but I, look at these volunteers. They're old, they're in bad health. I don't see all those young people that I saw in the paper months ago that were volunteering to learn this. All right, thank you.
I do have a question. To Mr. Grayson's point of the implementation, does that document cover?
The implementation, the document right here, the implementation on the building, like I've said, is left out at this point.
Just to try and.
The, we talked, I understand last night at the, at the rescue squad meeting, and I talked to Mr. Dodson and Mr. Grayson yesterday. We were talking about maybe January, this thing going into effect. The way that the updated agreement is laid out, that is in front of the board right now. I'm just left the right document up there. Pretty, pretty close, pretty close. And Mr. Dodson, Mr. Grayson both have it at this point, is December 1st, this is going to effect. That gives a little bit of time for our EMS director to get all pieces in place so that everything is streamlined as far as getting things going. But also, it would give the time needed for the addendum on the back, appendix A, which is the accelerated MCRS, volunteer accelerated release requirements for him. And I understand Mr. Dodson has already submitted to Mr. Hilstrom a grouping of members, and that's where we can start the vetting process. And by December 1st, we should be able to be done with that, it should be pretty easy. December 1st needs further realignment. The other one I forgot to leave out and we completely missed, completely, Mr. Dodson identified it yesterday to me, was drivers. There's a difference to make up approved for one ambulance, everybody needs to correct me that's in EMS, one EMT, and a drive. Correct, sir, for DLS call. For DLS call, just sort of thing. We had admitted drivers in our critical board. We hadn't even lined up in any of the meetings we've had. It has now been had. So that should take care of that side of the board. Anybody else from the board have anything they'd like to ask, questions, comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, so I, I mean, I'm a firm supporter of the squad. My mother's last trip, the hospital was with the squad accompanied by Marjorie Lamar. And she diagnosed it on the spot when she walked in the kitchen. I too have had sleepless nights on this, thinking, why did I sign up for this job? This is one of the bugs I want to have to take. But I am, when I was reading this new MOU yesterday, the part that jumped out at me immediately was department membership. In the first sentence, the county department of EMS shall consist of career and volunteer personnel. Well, no one thinking that Mr. Dodson, Mr. Grayson, Mr. Jones, all of them had read that. That is what it's all about. The rest of it, you know, the details, sounds like we've got that worked out. And I just hope that we can get this thing signed and move on because the squad has been here forever. And understanding that the population in Madison County, the 65, according to Weldon's and Cooper, population of age group in Madison, 65 and older is going like this. We've seen it, I sat in year before last on the budget negotiations just because I was running for the board and I wanted to see how it happened. And then of course, I was part of it this year. And so the, the expense is going right with the population, just like Weldon Cooper has said. We have more ALS calls now than ever before because of the aging population. The requirements, like Mr. Jackson was saying, are, are just over, over the top for what it takes to qualify for ALS. So I am very relieved that it looks like we're going to have something we can put together and continue the relationship.
Anybody else? Hey, this, anybody else from the public like saying something? Let me see, anybody on the computers have anything to say?
No chat.
That's, that's unfortunate. At this point, we know that the squad has continued their meeting, like Mr. Grayson said. We hope that they will pass as a member, as a body, this MOU. Our plan at this point is to take action at our meeting on, I think it's October 27th. The direction in which the squad votes tomorrow night will determine the action that we take as a whole. Who can go from there? Again, thank you everybody for coming. Thank you for the squad's leadership, for working with us, Mr. Jones as well, I apologize for omitting you. We think we've got a document that's pretty sound, a lot of work that's been included, a lot of sleepless nights, rubbing my head, lost some more hair. Who can go from there? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
If y'all would like to stick around for the rest of the meeting, we'd be glad to have you, but I distracted several of you who would like to, very much. Proceed, Mr. Weaver. One more can stick around if you want. All right, who's singing? Hey, an absolute question, so you just bring it back up.
Let's do a dog walk.
No, we're not doing that. I have this to your list, Joe Mack. Consider agenda. We've removed G. Anybody have anything they'd like to go over or remove? What's planned for?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the, or approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay. Motion's made in second. Further discussion? Fair and done, all in favor of signature folks saying aye. Aye. Same sign. All right, constitutional office and county departments, we've been just working our way around the room. Ms. Wow, let's start with you.
I'm just going to bring you up today for the month of September. We sent to the state, which is one of our biggest months, we've had a long, 98,875. We sent to the county, I mean, everybody says the economy is terrible, but this is one of our biggest months we've had. We've been, we've reported 211 needs, judgments, marriage wise, 58 will documents. So the county received 28,838 dollars. We had seven circuit court days, we filed eight civil actions, and again, six people.
Any questions? All right. Excuse me, next, Ms. Frye. What do you have to report for us?
Well, I'm happy to say that we have three applications for the IDA board. So we've, you all received a letter from Mr. Fisher that he's planning to resign. So let us know if you want us to advertise that now. Mr. Cox, now they talked about the, that you all normally do in January, and that's a couple of companies in the committee. We want to go through that. Also, I put a little verb in there about the luncheon, y'all let me know something, and also about here.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Don't want to do it now, or do you just want to come back to the mini vacancies? You have three applicants for the IDA at this point. Mr. Hale, Doug Parsons, and Steve Hoffman. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. We do need to assign them a person they are replacing, and that goes with a term expiration. What would y'all like to do for your board? Peter Rice, that term, Mr. Patty, Bill Price, and Stephen Hill. How would y'all like to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we've got three good candidates. You all may not know Mr. Parsons. He is one of my neighbors up in Etland, and I've known him for eight years, nine years now. And he very much wants to be more involved in the county. He's been living here 17 years. So I, I vouch for Mr. Parsons and Mr. Hale. He's my cousin, so I know he's a good guy. So.
Well, don't tell me that. And then Steve.
And Steve, we all know.
We have met him once or twice on a local ledger. How would y'all, how would y'all like to proceed here? We have two terms in '23, we have a term in '22, and a term in '24. But if we get the two terms in '23, took advantage of applicants, but the other one is '24, and I could just keep advertising for the one for place for '22.
'22, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the applicants for Mr. Hale, Mr. Parsons, and, and Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Hale would take Mr. Rice's spot. Mr. Parsons would take Mr. Patty's spot. And Mr. Hoffman would take Mr. Price's.
All right, so we've got Hale for '23, Parsons for '24, Mr. Hoffman for '23.
Second.
It's made in second. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am. Any further discussion? One, just like to thank those applicants and everybody that worked their hardest to get them to apply. Further discussion? Here in none, all in favor of signature folks saying aye. Aye. Opposed, staying. It's all in.
Yes, I'm that. I want to circle back, so if the board's okay with it, Mr. Fisher resigned effective the end of January, and I believe the RSA appointment expires at the end of December. What we would do is, is kick into an advertising mode unless you are ready to, you have somebody in mind to appoint to the planning commission, or I believe Mr. Koppich is eligible to be reappointed to the service authority. So we'll.
Yeah, and he has said he will, he's willing to serve another term, right?
If you'd like to, go ahead and appoint Mr. Koppich back to RSA.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we reappoint Mr. Koppich to RSA for another term.
Motion's made in second. Further discussion? Here in none, all in favor of signature folks saying aye. Aye. All in favor of same sign. We need to advertise for Mr. Hoffman's father on RSA.
But no, it's different terms.
Yeah. What about Mr. Fisher, you want to advertise that position?
What we thought we'd do is advertise that along with the other, others that are coming up for renewal at the turn of the year. So we will start working on that soon. There were two other things on Mr. Frye's reports, the holiday luncheon. I guess there's a question with the pandemic upon us and all that, whether we want to move forward with that event or not. Is that good, Ms. Frye?
If you want to tell them what the question is.
Yeah, well, what are you talking about, the luncheon? Well, I, I had suggested that perhaps we do something like order a truckload of turkeys and have the turkeys in the, in the parking lot of the fire department, and everybody come by and, and get one. We, we did it at Rochester when I was working over there, and it was kind of nice. You know, as an employee, go up behind the truck and hand you a turkey, you know, for the holidays. Oh, yeah, sorry. Or something to that effect, you know. I don't know how much the meals cost us, you know, for a luncheon, but whatever's comparable.
It seems to be about $22.95.
No, we could buy some wholesale birds, would you?
I just.
We all think about that.
I like it.
Let's proceed with that.
It's, yeah, oh, wash financially.
I can see how that goes. Everybody in favor of handing out turkeys?
Yeah.
Driving these turkeys.
Yes.
All right. Yeah, Terry, Mrs. Weaver, what would y'all like to do?
Yeah, I think, I think we should. I think we should give her a chair, and I think we should, we ought to present it to her here.
Try to do, let's do that at the first meeting of the summer. How's that? Ms. Frye, would you be in touch with the five folks down there at court? All right, good.
You'd have to have him come at the first meeting instead.
Yes, man. But good with these items. Anybody else have any deep, complex questions for Ms. Frye? That's a shame. All right, Frye Moore. What do you have going on, Frye Moore?
I know, I do, Moore.
Now, the new non-alien system has been installed, implemented, and trained on effective last Wednesday. Fourteen kids out of all of them were very smug. Some comms owners are set to be delivered on the 26th of October and installed 26th to 28th. I have a con, that and Roger, so we'll have to disassemble, so we'll get that outside. We'll do that in 24 minutes. Get that ironed out. State has said that we are set to go live, as he meant the next generation out of February 2. I do not believe that things are going to happen. There's people that a lot of things that are happening with COVID still and up to date. We are going to be ready, I believe, with our Jazz information. We have a non-alien system installed, it's been piped, I've got one more firewall to put in, we'll have that going. So we're in a really good spot, it's just what about the state can make it happen.
Question for the board. Fair.
Did I miss Ms. Wow?
Yes.
Talking about your new system in the circuit court? Because she's worked really hard, we're finally going to have excellent technology in the circuit court. So we are, we are going to be able to do WebEx and calling from the court. So. Um, so she tried it out Friday, she tried it out today, and hopefully it will go all the way back to where we're at with our first move from RSW. So that will save the sheriff's office a lot of time, money, following pickup and rates for routine matters. Obviously, we will still pick them up if they have a substantive hearing for something like a first call or an arraignment. Um, it's not as necessary to happen there. So that is a really excellent move. We still have not been approved for jury trials in Madison. Charles Hall, Almaron, Cleveland, and I hate to call anyone to have to pay for it. Um, there is a bill in the General Assembly, you may have heard about Senate Bill 5007, that would allow defendants to choose whether or not they have a sentence by jury in Virginia. So it will effectively take away jury sentencing in Virginia, which we, for a lot of, for a lot of different reasons, but will likely increase the number of jury trials. So that's something that we are following very closely, because obviously that will be an impact, not just on the budgets of my office and the police office and the sheriff's office, as well as it would be a significant impact of the citizens in Madison County, whether or not they get called for carrying duty right now. Or we get about one or two scheduled a month, but it would probably go up pretty significantly depending. We don't know. I'm happy to talk to anybody about why I think that it's not the way to solve the problem that they want to solve, but I won't waste your time today.
What's the problem they want to solve?
They think that there's a penalty for defendants who do trial by jury. And I'll admit that in some ways there is, but this is not going to solve it, and it increases the cost, hiring attorneys, it's going to increase the cost of access to justice, and with that sort of thing, it does not help a defendant get justice. It also ignores the big justice and community members who want to have a say in crimes and the punishments and consequences of those in their community. Um, it also removes a check upon the power of the legislature, because when the legislature says, "I think this should be a crime," and the community says, "No." Or, "I think that this should maybe be a less serious crime or a more serious crime." So there's a lot of reasons I think that this is not solve the problem that jury needs to solve, my. But my opinion, not anyone else's. Um, and I'm happy to be wrong, so we'll talk about that another day. Um, government are up. If you are so worried, you can go on the Virginia Court's website, and you can look at statistics by month, by year, year over year, and we're up some different number, like 160%. Um, so it's not, um, it's not going out, but that's all right. It's like, we like signing them and like, fill them out. I think that's it. We already got four applications for my position. Oh, Kevin and I have meetings tomorrow for the criminal justice.
You're meeting with your buddy?
Yeah.
Good.
Great time.
Question for Clarissa.
Well, I got, I got one question. So in order to get a permit for carrying a gun, this is concealed you're talking about?
It's a concealed handgun. Just a new weapon, you can get a permit to carry it.
Do I need to show you that I know how to use it?
So, um, that is perhaps one of the reasons that the.
It's curious.
We are getting an additional influx is that beginning of June. Is it January I want to mention here that there's a, something for the General Assembly right now to extend it to the law courts, but that has not been passed since July, January 4th of 2021? It will require you to have an in-person class. Right now, you're allowed to take out a class and competency over the internet. And so as I feel like first, you'll have to have an in-person class. Um, obviously, you know, I've talked to sheriff's office, and, you know, we always recommend to get in-person classes. Um, it's, it's better, you learn more, a lot of the in-person classes also offer Black Fires, and you can see how it, how it works rather than in an actual. So that's one of the reasons. If you have a hunting license, that will qualify. I said that about the sheriff's office and the Commonwealth, which are in-person.
Good. My in-person classes went from age 10 to 18 now.
Yeah, so we, so we, I mean, I have my hunting license class that I took forever.
Hundred seconds.
Yes, that was.
Great.
A hundred percent.
We tell people, we tell a lot of people because they can't find their hunting certificate where they took it at, they can't find that. They took it years ago. Go over line, $31, take it, you need a cure. You know they know how to shoot a gun. They've been hunting all their lives, but they can't find it. They've got to have some kind of competency. So they don't have, as a genuine request.
Thank you.
So September was not as busy, but we ran 124 for EMS calls. Our total response time was nine minutes. Um, have had some personnel changes. We're currently down two FTEs. I'm in the process of advertising and billing those. We've had one round of interviews. I was able to hire one person out of that. I've got more interviews tomorrow. I also want to talk briefly on first responder, first responder mental health. That not only from the COVID pandemic, just, I feel like this life in general has everybody kind of stressed out by a lot. Um, I've been in communication with other leaders in the fire and EMS community, and we're seeing an increase in mental health distress, burnout amongst our responders. Our responders are on the front line of the pandemic and do not get a break from it. They're not only concerned with their own health and safety, but bringing infection to their loved ones at home. We're also entering flu season. Flu season in combination with COVID-19 will likely bring significant staffing challenges for us. Holding personnel after their shift to maintain minimum staffing will extend the 24-hour shift to 36 consecutive hours. The ability to prove time off may not be possible. So unfilled shifts, workforce shortages, more burnout. So I encourage the county to begin looking into mental health resources and ways to mitigate burnout. More first responders die from suicide than in the line of duty, and I appreciate your consideration for that. Norovirus is a predictable thing. Each year, we deal with it in our department, close quarters, add in the pandemic. We're already short-staffed, so I just want to paint that picture. I'm happy to answer questions, but right now, it's a predicted need. All right, moving on. Generator was installed on 10/6. On October 21st or 22nd, the propane tank will be installed by Southern States, and that's in preparation for winter. If we lose power, that's a loss in communications, dispatch notification, et cetera. Um, part of that includes a lease amendment. So David James, our landlord, has agreed to reduce our monthly rent to $2,100. Um, and the county picks up the cost of the propane that will fuel the generator and also the station heat. Um, and in the packet, I added the updated lease for your review. Move on.
Everybody okay? Yeah. You can send it in there a little far. Please.
All right. Um, next thing is the medical director amendment. As we, um, we all know, this MOU, added personnel, pandemic oversight, et cetera. The request is to increase the medical director's compensation from $10,000 to $15,000 annually. Um, and I fully support that.
Here and no one, there's a simple saying, "I oppose, staying."
Medic 20 extended warranty requests. So the new ambulances that are on order come with this. We're in the process of developing a fleet replacement plan and adding this warranty to Medic 20, which is currently here, to align all of our apparatus to be covered. And just trying to create that consistent fleet plan, we said. All right. Thank you, Clay. Um, to outfit the ambulances, there, each ambulance requires two radios, one that's in the cab and one that's in the patient compartment. We need a total of six. Um, the cost of that's $4,615. That's to outfit Medic 30, Medic 40, Response 1, and the Tophets. Those are the vehicles that are currently on order.
Take out a radio.
I've talked with Brian. We've put our heads together to see if there was reserves in the county other vehicles. Also looked at used stuff, and it just doesn't work.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, you look like you have certain comments. Don't worry, it's going to work.
Looks like, I think, I can talk about later, but I think there needs to be this understanding coming out along with this from other. It's not coming from here. It's gone. Everybody's gone. So I just want to put that out to the board. Now, when you approve things, you've got to figure out where to come from. Or come out with that.
Yeah, there's a good proof. There are lines, there's various.
So no, no, I got it in here somewhere. You've got a firm quote? Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the purchase of the radios for EMS of $4,615.
Second.
I'm just maybe second. Only quick comment. These are like, these are compatible with the system I'm doing. Now, good, so we're in line here. I'm always at these spec downs in the system. The system will perform, other programs require. Good, good. We've got two years until this radio project is done before we kind of need the radio to borrow it out. This way, go to the board, I get one. Any other comments on board? Here and no one, there's a simple saying, "I oppose, staying."
All right, I'm happy to answer questions. Personnel request to deputy chief, which has been presented before. Um, we currently have an interim lieutenant for the pandemic. I'd like to transition that position to permanent, and we need two additional FTEs. This is tying back to the mental health, people being off. We've been operating at minimum, and this will give us the opportunity to have some reserves.
We've spoken more than once about that. I mean, everybody's very, very. According to Noah, the EMS lieutenant is in annual, is on just because of the COVID period.
Yes, sir.
So we just make that a permanent full-time position. The two full-time EMTs, I see that there's no cost associated to two full-time EMTs. No costs.
Forty-five, forty-six plus fringe.
You're 120K for three full-time, you see, roughly. There you go, that's the right one. Uh, the, uh, we have noticed that we've been operating at like a bare minimum. I think we've been operating slightly loaded out. Haven't had a lot of people that can, might have a little bit of time off, but kind of, we're, we're operating on shooting range. Having these people be super helpful, especially in this dark time in the year when time changes. It's just, it's something we need to do. Optimally, it would be during the budget season. My comment is, is it appears to me, is the evening basically, basically be having a continual ad out there for the evening. It would seem like, we have great people, but it does seem like it's a, something with higher turnover than a lot of the other offices in the county, helping against our fine staff in any way. But this is something that will continue to be very competitive job market. It's something we will continually have to do. I personally don't have any issue with putting two full-time EMTs adding that to the, that might be something. We all think.
Okay, so the deputy, the deputy chief is going from part-time to full-time?
Deputy is in place at this point.
It's already.
It is not.
It's not in place? Oh, I'm sorry, okay. EMS.
Yeah, this is more full-time.
Yep. So that's what we need, huh, Noah?
Yes, sir.
I've got to put in a plug too. We've been working on this MOU, which, and we're in a clear position with the MOU, very good position. The reason we're in such good position is because Noah, Mr. Oz, Greg, working diligently on this whole, uh, working so diligently on this. We've put a tremendous amount on Noah, on his newest position. The responsibilities are taken over, he's conjoined with the volunteer team. He's going to put more pressure on that, giving him a little bit of bandwidth to delegate some of the responsibilities there. I think we'd like to.
Yep.
So I'm like, but all, I mean, you got deputy chief, deputy nurse, but you don't like Let's make a motion. I'm with the Indian face, but that's fine. Uh, it's, it's the right face to make, okay? Um, wait, I think we need a motion to improve this position, so you can go ahead and start
So I move to approve adding a deputy chief, transitioning current lieutenant position to permanent, and combining an extra two full-time EMTs.
Uh, motion saved a second. Further discussion? Just for clarification, Bruce, right now, we're going on the pain side. We run two through 24/7, two 65. This would give EMS a whole lot more free ways for step. Um, further discussion? Here and no one, there's a simple saying, "I oppose, staying." What else?
All I got for now.
All right.
Thank y'all for your support. Appreciate it.
Um, moving on. Uh, move to his correct position back on the wall. Mr., uh, come on, Eric. Go ahead.
Well, prior to this, I just want to echo Noah's concern about mental health first responders. Uh, some of the things that these first responders come up on, quite frankly, it's hard to, you know, really talk about. Now, given the fact that they're concerned about taking this virus home to their camera, it just, it just, at some point, you got to look at it. I've watched these people through my whole career, terrible calls, and they just go into this, this hole. So just, I would encourage you to pay attention to what he's telling you. Okay, so as far as COVID, 117 cases have been identified since early this spring. Eight people have been hospitalized from the virus, and three people have died according to BPH. Our BPD stock is good. Um, they're all, as anybody, you know, flu season's coming, and they're expecting an outage of the virus. You say anything if it's going to materialize or not, but, uh, again, our, I think we're ready to, especially with, you guys just approved a new decision. Same thing with BPH, it's the same old message, just wash your hands, and if you can't distance, wear a mask. And we just, and then we had 150 good shots last week, and we had a car house, we actually ran out of them. I didn't think we were going to go 150, but we had shown up, and we 150 first person that person. I would say everybody's been looking at the vaccine and maybe thinking about, you know, when one will become available? All of the year. Speculation, don't, don't get hung up on next week, this fall, next spring. Just let it filter out because, you know. Uh, also, just got a proof for grand, 7,500 bucks. Uh, it's not a lot of money in Noah's world, but I'm going to put a few words, Noah's quick. Other than that, what?
Any questions directly to John here? Um, since we brought up twice now, Mr. O'Leary, I didn't apply to accompany last year on this mental health and additional services to our staff. Where are. Uh, where are we at? And we, in the college last week, told us that it's going to cost one point five K, uh, per year. Seems like a regular amount of money to draw out our staff, another pound, um, but we are looking to try to figure out, everybody staying on that.
Brian, I tried to convince Brian to apply for the double man, just out of the way, he, he refused, so how's, how's Commissioner Renshaw doing?
Very, very good. We're busy, we got a lot of applicants, many, for now, they just come back. Um, just to remind them that we live in the second, to be timely, to have a meeting. Um, for some property, I don't want people stepping back. Just, I'd sustain it to be out, uh, by next weekend, um, to maybe all, anyway, I had. Certainly, uh, pick off a lot of, I'm assuming walk-ins, so we'll have a lot of people, uh, down, and go to, to lay off the day.
Questions for the members?
Okay. Uh, just staying busy, uh, which I was planning here shortly in the shelter policy. Uh, recently building vacant position at the shelter, which is part of the main state. Uh, Roger, spoke to Roger about concrete in the outdoor kennel. We want to try to get down, but I'll be sure to transfer, that's why we're going to send a lower P. Wondering how that's, that's why. Uh, and just trying to be all, staying within the shelter, options are up, so I'm just a little.
Questions, Mr. Gabe, right now, I know we're coming back, Chris. Thanks.
Okay, Brian. Um, I mean, MJ, I bring up some of the board, top-down sort of thing we're working on. I'm doing a lot, I have trouble tickets.
Pass around the mic for Mr. Gabe. Sorry, love.
That's okay, I'm all for the mic. Thank you, sir.
Um, so MJ, like I said, we'll be probably talking more on the top-down, bigger projects we're working on. Um, a lot of trouble tickets, a lot of just loving going from the EMPs to the CID, to the animal shelter, to the courts. Uh, it's really a good group of people, I love supporting them. So, I don't know what else to say as far as the day-to-day stuff, till we get back to, uh, MJ. I'm going to be working with Charles to try to figure out how much data is going to be coming across the network with the video cameras. And make sure that, uh, we don't clobber our network, and I think we can find a way to do that. It's fun working with, uh, Judge Morris today, setting up his webcam. Uh, it's another part of the diverse field of folks that I get to work with every day. Um, but ticket after ticket after ticket, um, I got so caught up that I didn't even realize yesterday was a holiday and I came into work. Walked into the admin building, set the alarm off. Brian came over, fixed that for me, and sheriff came out here, we're the deputy, and I explained to him, so that's my day, you know, my week, pretty much. I certainly am, uh, it's, 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 it's different, I've never done, you know? Hey, it's nice working with the judge when you're not like in front of the judge, you know, they, they're really pretty, pretty cool people, so.
Any questions, right? Please pass on the mic, thank you, pass on the mic to, uh, Tracy.
Tracy, you're up.
You don't want me to do that? I'll get up here so I'm not reading all some. I'll go through, okay? Um, so we launched our wonder love video, so if you want a feel-good video, you can go on our website and go on Facebook and look at that for our road trip and our grant. That highlights two thirty-one, DeCard, which is timely because they just celebrated their ten-year anniversary last weekend. There's also a blog available on Virginia Tourism, Blue Ridge Outdoors, lots of ads, uh, online ads, print ads, all covered by the grant. And I'll get into, do you want me to do the recovery grant stuff while I'm up here or come back?
What, the grant, yeah.
You want me to do that now? I have lots of other things. I'll go fast. Okay. Alright, um, the crafting the new normal, the Go Virginia Grant with Nelson sponsored a webinar on October first for partners calling Pushing the Positive. The Central Virginia Partnership for Economic Development had a Zoom meeting Friday, October second, with REC's new economic developer, uh, Felicia Ansa, who gave a presentation. And I'll get more into that later too. The resolution you guys signed in two thousand and eighteen for a scenic byway was finally approved. So September twenty-fifth, we received notification, group effort between Alamo Mall, Green, and Madison, making routes two forty, eight-ten, two thirty, and six twenty-six a byway designation. Which all that means is two thirty coming from Green to the stop sign, crossing over and hooking back up onto two thirty-one, making that all scenic byway. And traveler spending for two thousand and nineteen, the official press release will be released on Thursday. So I'll give some good news, because next year won't be so great. Uh, traveler spending in two thousand and nineteen was up three point three percent, so it's thirty-seven million, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-one. Local tax receipts were up to three point two percent at one million, fifty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight, and employment was up, or was up about three jobs, really, two hundred and seventy-eight jobs. Tourism committee meeting will be on Tuesday, October twentieth, I assume in person. Um, attending the governor's summit on rural prosperity virtually on October twenty-first. And so, as I've stated before, uh, January first, Madison will be part of the Central Virginia Small Business Development Center, which is a lot more active, and they're actually doing our first just-for-Madison event, November twelfth, so I have flyers on that. Which are pretty impressive. Marketing and social media now, and it's get, get help building or rebuilding your online strategy, learn about creating a strategy for web, email, and social media. And then they'll have one-on-one sessions with businesses that they like. And Virginia Tourism Summit will be in person, like a third of the people, November sixteenth, just a one-day event. And Madison will be at the, uh, virtual Quad County Business Summit, November seventeenth, also virtual, we're a guest this year. And they bring together businesses from the counties of Havana, Green, Luisa, Orange, Madison this year for half-day of networking and educational programs. However, they also feature a quad tank pitch competition, where entrepreneurs will have a chance to win five thousand dollars to support implementation of their business plans. That is that. Um, sent over to Sean, we changed the wording on the, from coworking spaces to office-sharing spaces and office-sharing services. And so far, we've just added the links at the end of the document that was in the packet, I think, too. That by signing this agreement, if we decide to do this, you also will follow COVID-nineteen, emergency action, prevention treatment, all that. And I'll go back to, so the other thing that, um, has come out is the governor offering thirty million dollars for broadband. And so, but the kicker is, like everything else, it has to be figured out, implemented, paid for, completed by December. And I missed the webinar this morning, you probably saw it, I'm going to watch it in the morning. Um, I normally check my emails over the weekend, but did not happen this weekend, so I'm going to watch it ten o'clock in the morning. Uh, so, here's the thing, I was asked to look at engineering and, um, planning, not the planner, not an engineer, but what I am is competitive. So if there's a way for us to get free money, I'm not going to turn that down, and it suggested working through your local provider, which of course I reached out to Clint to see if there's anything we can come up with to get some of the money. Also, with REC, I found out today, they have been surveying people about if they were to offer services, would you be interested? Well, that's kind of a no-brainer, but that's not in the immediate future. So, I think I've kind of talked to Jack, there are a couple of people in the planning commission that are working on it. We have a couple of citizens that are really interested in not just wanting broadband, but actually interested in planning and implementing. And then Clint's got several ideas as well, so I guess I need direction if you want us to go for it, if you want somebody to look it over before we actually submit it. And that's a rolling, that started, uh, yesterday, so.
Well, I mean, I would, I would totally, obviously, look it over.
Right.
I would think, great, oh, yeah, glance at it, make sure it's straight.
What about Bruce? Would you mention?
I'm sure he would be willing to look at it. Um, the big one, I think, is just the issue with the internet being on the camp, what an important thing it is. We've tasked Oz, MJ, Juan, and more, for now, so if you all can get something together, then absolutely great, uh, with some review.
Okay. And then, oh, and Brian, who's working, if you want to be.
Is this broadband, is this broadband for commercial residential use or could also potentially be well-banned for the government?
Can I explain all of this, or would you like?
I'd be, yeah, I would love for Clint to explain that part, that'd be great.
Yeah. I apologize for running on and out.
Alright, thank you, Bruce.
Okay, so the deal is, that Wednesday last week, the governor announced this thirty million dollar pot of money from, from federal cares money. Money has to be, uh, spent, utilized, built, whatever you're going to do before December twenty-fifth. It is a first-come, first-served, there's no formal review, the way Vatti operates. Submissions were allowed to start yesterday, I doubt that they got much in yesterday, but because it is.
The first-come, first-served is not a dollar, there's a whole lot of review time involved, it's not.
Yeah, this looks good, go. And we've got nine weeks to execute. I've got three things I have written up already, I've got two more that I will write up in the next couple of days, or things that I would consider possibilities that we could do in a timeframe. Some of them would require the stars to align all perfect because of being a little bit larger than some others. But, this is all, these are things that are doable, but we have to jump on it, there is going to be a chunk of competition. It's a smaller than the Vatti bunch of money, there's not so much review, but that means that the level of detail doesn't have to be nearly as great as what goes into that, so I've got cost estimates. To be able to pick and choose or submit a bunch, I was told by the state guy this morning, that we can do relatively speaking, as many as we want to do. Well, the time question, the time question is critical, we have, is in my opinion, in there, hoping by Friday, or show's over and we can forget about it. We need to, in order to take advantage of this at all, we need to jump on it very quickly, right? There's not, yeah, so I.
I was doing the webinar last week, we didn't say a whole lot, other than.
You're up against federal money, somebody who's legally, but will have to review for the county because the county is the sole applicant, isn't that the public-private partnership that Vatti is? This is just the county saying, please give us some money, we've got a plan like so-and-so, you can review this. I can write these, but the county has to be the, because it's federal money, somebody who represents the county legally has to look this over and say, yeah, okay, we're, we're fine, agreeing to this.
I gotta say, I mean, we already, we already are, we've been doing this already. I mean, if it's the county's money and the county can take it and use it for county purposes.
Not like that.
Oh, no, no, this is targeted specifically only to broadband projects, cannot be used for anything else.
So it's not, it's, it's not fiber down Main Street?
Could be fiber down Main Street.
But it can't be by his.
Radios for EMS.
No, I, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about putting fiber down Main Street.
Okay.
We already have a quote on it. Brian Gordon's been working on this for a month and a half, and Bruce has been looking at it too. So, again, as long as we're talking about last Wednesday, which is, we had network issues, and he was looking at this issue of what, how we potentially put fiber down Main Street, all the way from the spoolboard, all the way to the iBots. So if there's something we can.
You know there's fiber already down Main Street now.
There's, and I'm going to let someone else answer that, because it's not the kind of fiber, but I mean, there, there.
What the hell does that?
Alright, alright, I want to get able to see more leads on this, because we might have really anything to look at. Um, Bruce, why is the fiber that we have down Main Street not what we need?
Well, as of last week, I was given this gentleman's name to go meet with, discuss that.
Oh, good.
And, uh, if I can get some of your time in the next day or so.
Alright.
We can talk any time of any day that you would like.
Are you there tomorrow?
I'm there every day.
Clint, Clint, Clint is definitely the, once our internet guy in Madison, from the private sector, we've got Livingston on our side. Everybody else apparently knows about this technology stuff. Um, Tracy and Clint and Brian Livingston, it would seem like that's the direction to start to work on this. John Gray, you look like you've got a comment.
I'm just curious, you said the governor announced this, but you're talking about federal money?
Yeah, it is cares money, this is cares money passing from the federal government through the state, in whatever fashion that works. Direct, whatever they bring to, state to the county.
So the accounting requirements are still going to have to be.
Yeah, I'd have to really ask the governor's administration about that, I tried to answer about how this money flow on this, they said, well, it's whatever the county and we agreed to.
So.
That's how we're.
Obviously, this is cares money, it's not just take it and spend it on whatever you want, there's some body of rules, it's might not be Title V rules, like the federal money we're looking at. But every dollar of cares money has restrictions on it, so before you do anything else, that's the first thing you need to do, is figure out what these restrictions are.
Yeah, there's a document from the state says exactly what that is right now, I got that on Wednesday in my hands, I read about half of it, decided I didn't need the other half. That is, that is all there, but this was thrown up so fast last week, that it is now, and will probably continue to be a little bit loosey-goosey the entire time. Sure, they're trying to refine it, but the need to move quickly because of the timeframe for completion, it's going to be, things will be up in the air, I'm sure for one.
Alright, why don't Tracy work with, why don't Tracy work with whoever she seems fit, and probably going to talk to MJ, on the accounting side of this, if it runs through the county's books. See if they'll be, some applications, though. Yes.
I mean, I have a meeting tomorrow.
I, I know, everybody's got.
No, no, I'm saying, we, we, we have been actively discussing the subject of fiber down.
This is, this is a pot of money that the governor released yesterday, yesterday.
But I'm, I'm saying, I mean, so, I, I, no, no offense, but if the county can get the money, I would think the county should try to get the money.
We agree, everybody is on that page, let's, it's a money.
Well, it's not, it would seem like that it can be, oh.
Yep.
The locality has to apply for the money, that's the point. Locality has to apply for the money.
Why don't we see, let Tracy take the lead on this, and see where we go. It sounds like you've got some private sector interest, plus public sector interest. You probably need to reach out to somebody.
And I did not want to lead on this, but somebody needs to go after the money, so.
Get it.
I'm not the expert, I would never pretend to be an expert on anything, I'm not an expert. Yes.
Um, and we appreciate that. Who has questions on this? Lots of questions. Is everybody okay with Tracy being the lead? Ah, yes, I just want to throw something out there. The main reason we're looking at wireless is like budget for you. Next thing, maybe from TRA and the DCC. I don't think that's going to work, because it's budget, you signed this contract last December. But that being said, is what we do, we do that. That's way better.
The target in, the target in the documents from the state are that this is largely about, largely about either middle-mile or residential service toward. It's not about fixing the EMS service. It's does, the words in here don't go that, don't look like they go that direction at all. It does say. It does say, how many, how many households will be served?
Yeah, it's mainly about households is what it was reported.
Figure out what options we can have if they are fairly loose with this, which we'll see how that goes. Maybe we can put in multiple applications. They don't have to approve all of them. It's up to them what they approve.
You can submit as many as you want.
Thank you.
What he said.
Yep. Tracy?
Yeah, do my best. Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
All right.
Everybody good on that? Yep? What? MJ, are you distressed?
So I'd be careful about assuming that that restriction on the budget applies to all possible. That restriction that you're familiar with, the one about going back to a certain budgetary degree, I'm not, that, that's primarily as far as I am related to Title V here's money. I wouldn't assume that that's applicable to, to ever. And I also wouldn't assume that if, you know, if you have the potential to spend 400 and you got 200 in your budget, that you couldn't get another 200. Does that make sense?
Awesome. We're going to have this path without a proposal to be executed. Doing some stuff without the board involved in this one. Just to make clear, I follow this rules that I was talking about last time. County cash, contract sort of, county funds, all some stuff. Just some call back applications. The thing is about putting new antennas on county operated towers, just to send the corporate reports to the board and infrastructural. So that's something that, that's what I'm, 100%.
It does allow for in-kind, so I can. I mean, that looks better to have something.
Everything you said is probably done. Anybody else got anything on this one? Let Tracy get on this path and see what we have. All right. You have more to report.
The grant.
Yes. Let's do that while you're standing up. Okay.
Okay. So just to give a background, which I got into the report in the second one I did not. Madison Cares Business Recovery Grant Program had a successful first round. Out of the 150,000, 119, 589 had been awarded in the first round. We announced the program was starting August 12th. And to stay tuned for more information on Facebook. Once documentation was in order, we placed an ad in the Madison Eagle blasted via Constant Contact, mailed paper versions via Chamber of Commerce, placed on social media via Facebook, LinkedIn, and on the website. The Madison Eagle did a story as well as interviews with both NBC and CBS. There were 33 inquiries. One withdrew. 10 opened applications but did not submit materials. 12 were submitted, qualified, and were approved. And then only two applicants didn't get the full amount they requested as they could only demonstrate economic injury in the amount they received. And then second round just ended. And that was after, I'm getting approval on September 22nd to allow nonprofits. Turns out the one that withdrew was a nonprofit. So there were four, three additional inquiries and the one that they went back and checked with everybody who had inquired. So there were four inquiries, four awards for amounts for which they were able to show economic injury and available funds. So, and actually, one of the first round participants was only able to supply receipts for 9,752 out of, so, out of the 10,000. So those funds were put back in the pot, allowing for $23,159 available in the second round. So we still prioritize businesses. So what happened with that is we had to pick either doing the business or giving the amount to a nonprofit. We were able to give the business an amount and funded the nonprofit 13,166 out of the 20,000 requested. So total of 35 inquiries, one withdrew in first round, nonprofit that applied in second round, 10 opened but not submitted, 16 submitted, qualified, and were approved for a total of the grants 142,500. And then the fee for CIC for scoring and gathering your information and helping one-on-one with all the businesses as well.
I'm good. So Tracy, so Heartland Institute is a nonprofit, right? And has a library is a nonprofit.
Those are the two.
They're the two nonprofits. What were the discriminators on those, those two?
So. He double-checked with me to see are we still prioritizing businesses? And I said, go back and look. We still prioritize businesses.
Right.
Over the nonprofit. So in that way, we were able to give the business 720. So everybody got something that.
What I'm asking is, so I'm sure the library, they, they applied for well more than $2,967.
They could only apply for what they could show economic injury for.
Okay, so I said.
They have papers.
They showed you, okay, never mind. Thank you very much, Tracy.
Thank you.
All right. MJ.
So.
If you'd like to.
I agree. I was asked to give an update on care spending. There were a lot of changes. I had given you a list on 9/22 of approved amounts that already had changes from the last time you looked at this. However, this time I actually went back and looked to the extent that we have either paid bills or have bill purchase orders. And I, I can assume that the schedule was originally prepared before the procurement was done because there were a number of differences between things that were approved but were not been approved of the amount of the original purchase order. So I have made those changes. I would also like to point out, you can see what changes I've made in the column that says adjustments for actual. There's a couple of things. Lita had said she wanted a Polycom system. It came in at less than what she wanted. So she, she wanted to exchange that for a high def projector. That, that's something that wasn't specifically on this list before, but the, the change is, is about $300 higher. There, there are several departments, well, it's mostly EMS, that is charging, they, they are charging a lot of things to cares where there is no specific allocation. It's mainly for supplies. My assumption right now is the 45,000 that's allocated to facilities and maintenance can cover that. But I would like to point out that EMS needs to be careful about from going forward, the three months are left, that they actually have enough money to, to charge what they're, you know, when they send bills to finance and say they want cares to pay for it, we need to have a conversation about whether there's enough money for cares to pay for this stuff. There was a five, a $5,300 sanitizer and sprayer that was approved on a purchase order that was not, never approved by the board. So I added that. On financing IT, I took $61,000 out of the number, not because I don't think it's eligible, but because you don't have enough money. Sheriff's Office, there was another $8,600 worth of purchase orders that were approved subsequent to 9/22. So I had to reduce other places for that. The sheriff's office is also charging generically. They're, they're going out buying their own sanitizer, their own PPE. And there is no allocation in this funding for that. So, so right now, there is a, look at a, in facilities and maintenance. There's a generic provision in facilities and maintenance, I think for $48,000. And I'm assuming that generically, when EMS sheriff go out and buy sanitizing and EMS supplies, that that will cover it. But that may in fact not be the case. I think we're going to be pretty close if they spend as, you know, as they have spent in the first quarter. So as we go forward, month by month, I think that if you, the department heads that are charging things to cares need to take a look at the schedule. And if you don't see money on here specifically allocated for something, check with me to see whether you can charge it because there isn't a, there isn't a whole lot of money left. There's a few little reserves, but not much. Few other things I wanted to point out. There's a few things that have been approved, but there's still not any procurement done on them. One is two laptops for Brian, for Brian Fisher revenue, Daniel. One is, at least I can't find anything. There's something on here for $4,000 for EMS for pepper batteries, which I can't find any purchase order on. There's another purchase order for $5,020 for EMS or cellular antenna that I can't find any procurement that's been done on yet. Bruce is still looking at buying the audio visual computer. Bought some of the components. The 107 that's outstanding for the ERP relates to the, to the, to the software contracts, which haven't been signed yet. There's $2,300 for GIS for Madison County building footprints. I see no purchase order done on that. There's these three generic items, which I'm going to, they're, this is where, if you look on page three and the column, third column from the, from the right-hand side that says approved but no procurement, there's $3,000 left in planning for extra printing for public meetings. That seems pretty high. So I'd say that that's something that maybe could be used for something else. There's still $41,000 left out of the $48,000 generic provision for PPE and sanitizing. That may be a little high. Might consider, say, maybe taking $10,000 away from that.
So whose name is on that? Is that John or is that?
Public safety. That would be, I think it's under, I think it's been facilities. I don't really know. I don't have, I, I don't, I didn't. I can, I don't have that. It's actually on the schedule. I hit the columns.
Months ago, we did PPE and sanitizer and all that.
Right.
What part did he put that in? It's a bottom line. Said one of the other. Non-line stuff, not the right stuff.
I still, I still think.
But not last time, they let COVID-19 on the receipt.
Right. Right. So. So, so what I'm, what I'm trying to say is for the generic kind of supplies, we need to start looking at that every month. At the end of the month, okay, how much is left? How much is left? Because there are multiple departments that are doing that. Rogers doing it, EMS is doing it, you're doing it. And if everybody keeps doing that and nobody has a control total, that's the way you go.
Why are we not rubbing all these supplies through? I'm sorry, Noah. Why are we not rubbing them all through? Noah, are you ordering PPE?
I think every department's ordering PPE. Also, let me just throw out, before you answer that question. When I get a lot of stuff through EDM, that's charged with safe. That's, that's on them.
That's better.
I know, but that's what I'm saying. I've got several shipments of stuff in that we're not paying for.
The best. They deserve to go.
Well, you're paying it eventually.
Yeah, I know. I got it. A little different body. Why are we not ordering PPE in bulk through GONF here? Yeah, I mean, John, earlier, I mean, you, I heard you say you checked with Brian, you checked with, with different departments. Are you pretty much checking with everybody? You, you just handle it?
Yeah, I, I literally, sometimes like, what business are they buying there? That they, where you at? What do you need? And if they need some, I'll go back and I will stop, I'll get it. Whether it's, you know, supply from EDM or Roger ordered it, you kind of. Roger and I kind of get together on this stuff.
It would seem, and I've identified, we're not calling the batteries for PPE so fast as PPE, are we?
Yeah, we are. I mean, so for reporting purposes, yeah, I would do that.
Okay. The, the generic PPE, it would seem would be most efficient if it went through one source just for accountability purposes. Is everybody on board with that?
It's not actually, it's not just PPE. It's also all the sanitizing stuff, which is, I'm assuming, I mean, Roger buys a lot of that and he buys it from, some of it's coming from Syntas, the hand, all the hand sanitizer stations. I don't know what Noah is buying, but at this point in time, I would recommend that stuff, sanitizing, PPE, that you start, we've only got three months left. Come up with a budget of what you need to buy and buy it and, and not buy, you know, $600 here, $500 here and two, because it's very hard to keep track of it.
I agree with that. The hands, the cleaning supplies, you know, it is classified as PPE. John seems to work fairly well with Roger. And I'm sure that's an easy one to deal with. But I would certainly think that we should institute some type of protocol when it pertains to generic PPE, that it was to go through John. And when I say generic PPE, I mean hand sanitizer. And I don't care if he delegates it out to Roger for, if he can get it from Syntas chief or something.
Yeah, so I say Roger's got a connection.
It would seem like it would be through John for masks, gloves, and hand sanitizer, which has got to be predominant PPE uses.
I've been sort of the gatekeeper for that stuff. But Roger's been sort of the supply chain. He, he's already bought us this stuff. I mean, other things too, but like all the stuff out here in the lobby, hand sanitizer. He just orders it from his regular supplier. Mark's a pro, they obviously, that's what we're back.
Correct. We sold that Roger. Go ahead. What do you want to hear? Yeah, I'm, so. So when Roger does that, what line item is that coming out of?
Well, it's so.
It's a good question. Just real quick.
This thing is harder to put together than you might think it is because I have a lot more line items than are what on here, than are what, than what shows up on here. There are a lot of people that are sending bills to finance marked cares that aren't on here. What I'm trying to say is you need to stop doing that and you need to check and see if there's some kind of routine supplies you need to buy. And Roger has a good handle on what he needs to buy. A lot of it, he's, he has organized with Syntas and they're delivering on a, you know, on a regular schedule. It's, it's actually not Roger, but it's the, you know, it's all the other little stuff that's coming.
Honestly, I knew it.
I know, but.
You have stuff like alcohol wipes that are part of the EAP thing that nobody ever required. So I bought them.
But you don't charge them to cares.
I bought it. I needed air purifiers. I bought them.
Right. She didn't charge the cares.
I don't know what to tell y'all, but like, I don't know that this is necessarily the core on the need to have this protection.
It would seem, it would seem so.
Or so you have nothing, she has nothing, Mark. I'm saying that this, it's an accounting question. I have a grant I have to take care of, that I have to account for. It's not a spending authority question. If you need something and you can go out in your department and buy it, that's, I have no problem with that. Charge it to your, the general fund. But if you say you want to charge it against this grant and I don't have funding for it, we're going to run out of money. So, so I'm asking for some sort of process from now on on all this little stuff that people are going out and buying in two and $300 increments that's adding up to $10,000 and $15,000. Have a process in place before, and it could just be come up with what you need between October and December and ask for it all at one time rather than try, than, you know, than going and buying this every two days.
I'll set the term over here to tighten up a little bit. We're close to the bottom of cares money. If we need items specifically and you can cover them through your budget, which is what is going to happen here. It is what's going to happen. Because COVID's not going away December 30th, even though that's when the money runs out. We need to tighten up. We need to get this accountability. It certainly makes sense, to me at least, to going through one central procure on some of the generic stuff. The way to do it, that seems to be, I mean, that seems like that is. But we do need, we do need to, if you've got requests, additional requests, it would seem like we should take applications or something when it pertains to those requests, just so that we don't go over and we have to start digging into the general fund on a lot of the different stuff.
So it's also, or, so I think, I think based on my review. So it's also, or, so I think, I think based on my review, that Noah has a lot of, a lot more specific kinds of things he needs to buy than, than just the regular, the things that the rest of us need, like masks. So what my recommendation is, is that EMS come up with a budget of what all the other stuff they need is and, and, and work it through these numbers because.
We at this point have this document in front of us that is very clear and shows where we're at and what has been approved. And you send this out to all departments and then everybody has the same document that we're working off of. And then we can kind of start building some type of internal control on the last of this care's money.
Yeah.
It would seem like it would be in the county's best interest to have some type of application on some of these purchases, not post-purchase receipts.
Yeah, but there, I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to, there are only three departments right now that are doing this. The sheriff's department is doing it, but relatively minor amounts. EMS is doing it and facilities and maintenance is doing it. So, so there, if you want to figure out, I mean, other people, other department heads are going out and buying stuff, they're either getting it from Roger or they're charging it to their general fund budget. And I don't, I don't care whether you do that or not. My issue is, is I have a grant fund and I'm trying to keep, I'm trying to keep track of what's, what's available without going over.
So everybody can see where we're at. Try to go through if you need generic PPE. There is some accountability. That's John here.
The only thing is, I was going to say it's schools. And I get a lot of stuff to schools too. That's, that's not on this ticket. It's on there, on the, schools and malls.
Are they, are they paying for it?
No, they're not paying people. I mean, I'm just helping them with what I can, but I'm not sure if they want it.
My only purpose is keeping track of the $2.2 million that we have to spend. Getting free stuff? I don't care. I mean, for my purposes, it makes a difference.
Yeah. John Scherz, you have this under control. Float around this schedule so everybody knows what is approved and where are the pockets money or, and we need to get some type of application or, put the application on some of these made, some of these purchases. Odds, go ahead.
So the only thing I want to say is, right now, out of the $2.2 million that's available for FY21, we've only spent $455,000. But we have another $1.567 million that, that's, we've done procurement encumbered funds. We haven't gotten, a lot of it is, is large ticket items in EMS that we're expecting. We only have $172,000 where there's been no procurement. And over 100 of that is related to the ERP, ERP system, which I, hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have a procurement. I do want to point out that in order to get my numbers to work, I had to take $61,000 out of my ERP budget because there's not enough money there. That was my plug basically. And that means no, no audio visual for this room and no touchless plumbing for the renovation. All that stuff is gone. We're going to have more money.
So.
We took John's disaster for a while.
Gets on the last page, under other potential abuses, not currently approved. And yes.
We talked about boys and girls, that's, that's what we talked about. So, am I talking? Where's these chairs for the dispatchers? Do I have to talk the chairs for the dispatchers? $61,000 for chairs. That's enough to pay for John's everywhere.
Well, they already bought the chairs, I think. Got the chairs. So they got the chairs. The early learning center. Have we approved those yet?
So, so the way I did this is I assumed that all the, the things that we, when we got to the issue of outside organizations, you approved the $125,000 for Boys and Girls Club. You approved the $5,000 for ASAT. The rescue slide is $7,100. That's based on, that were just receipts of things that they spent. It's not anything else. The Madison Learning Center, although I don't really know, I mean, they have specific requests on pricing on the supplies and the commercial washer and dryer. Problem is, is when you get down to, if you include all those things, there's only $15,000 left. And there's still several things that are due to recent, which is $7,000 request from the four years, an additional $18,000 from the Madison Learning Center and, and potentially more from the town.
The town.
Yeah. So, so my answer to, to that is, and my, my other thing is, is to reduce, the one thing that's easy to reduce, which is the ERP system, we just take more out of that and take another PAPER. And it's an easy adjustment because it's one thing. But, but I would be looking for more direction on what we want to do with the remaining items.
What have we awarded to the early learning center?
Well, I assumed, I mean, I, there's no, we hadn't really awarded anything to, to them specifically, but I, my sense is, is that for the specific requests, the name, you know, that we were going to try to help them. It's more for the financial, the financial support for the 4H Center and the Learning Center were bigger question marks because we weren't really sure about the rationale for it. And I have talked to some other, some other localities, not every, I guess some localities did that, some localities did not. I know Green did not, because we, but what I heard was they were concerned that if they, they did it for some and didn't do it to all, that it would be kind of.
Where do y'all want to go when it pertains to the early learning? I think that's the one that's been on the bottom. We, they've got requests for extra supplies and equipment. It seems like a very exact one. They got there or what?
I mean, there's no question in terms of eligibility for that one. It's a clear, it's a purely eligible expenses. I think when you get into just financial support for operations, it's a lot harder to make that argument. That's my.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we can still wait on a lot of the early learning center money. Excuse me. I mean, I was reading in the paper yesterday that in, you know, the general assembly right now, there, there was a whole paragraph about the money they're going to appropriate for childcare stuff. So I'm, I was looking at that going, okay, maybe, maybe that will, you know, do this. And then we can use this money for, for our ERP and stuff and stuff that all of our taxpayers are paying for. I got a problem. Come down to that sometimes.
But it seems like, so some of these pending requests.
Yeah.
4H, early learning center, the mass casualty trailer, obviously we're going to have money to buy school bus, the housing and utility grant program that social services brought up, which still has not given us any kind of monetary, I don't see that coming together. The advanced life form management, probably not on that one. Ludus and then the transfer station, which we still don't know. Advanced car, we'll have to cover it in the general fund anyway. At this point, doesn't seem like there's a whole lot more to do.
Yeah. And a lot of those things, I mean, they are items that sound like to me, you could push it, push it, push it until you pull the trigger right at the end or something.
Why don't we come back to this, let's do November, try to figure out where we're at once we have a little more on that one.
So I do have, the 4H club has, the 4H center has, and so has the learning center. They've both, you know, consistently asked me, like, you know, where, where do I stand with this request? So I'm at the point where I need to tell them they're on hold until.
November.
Okay. I'll just tell them that. And I, I just want to point out that this analysis says that there's $15,000 left, but I, I took $60,000 out of the ERP system that could go back in. So I, I don't see any possibility that we can extend all of this money.
Oh, we're showing, other questions? I'm going to send this out to everybody, which I think everybody needs to be on the same page. And let's try, as a county, to go through John and Roger on PPE.
It's, I, I'm going to emphasize this once again. It's all the little supplies, like the $100, $150, $200, $700 bills. They're from an account, from a recording point of view, they're very hard to keep track of and there isn't any budgetary control over any of it.
Very good. All right. Anybody else got anything? Do you have anything else on?
No.
All right.
And I'm not. But you all also need to understand, we've not been approved for jury trials yet. And one of the courts that was approved for jury trials had to put up a plexiglass in between every single juror in order to get approved. I don't know that people are going to ask that, but very easily, they haven't approved us, but they also haven't disapproved yet. And I think that's the big thing is the fact that they've not sent anything to us in order for us to have jury trials. And we got to have jury trials. I am, I can always say I'm 100% sure they're going to come to us and say, you've got to do something. You've got to do something. Our room's not big enough to have 12 jurors in that box. I'm just letting you know. I, I see us coming to you and saying, we're going to have to do something.
I know, 100%. And that's why I think some of these, and it's like emphasizing where we're at. Come back till November. We'll have more information. We know we have a lot of money that's still sitting there. We have made it very, very clear that we want to protect and fund in-house prior to funding out of house, for specific needs when it comes to my boys and girls. Are we guys there?
And I could have hold off on the, the, I mean, I'm still not 100% sure whether y'all approved me getting the projection or not. I can certainly hold off on that, but you need to know.
It's on the list.
So it's on the list. It's on the list.
No, I, I have that. I specifically mentioned that. I added that to the list because there have been a number of purchase orders that have been gone since.
Everybody, get everybody this list so that everybody's on the same page. If it's on there, it'll be taken care of. Let's try it. And we know everybody needs them. The little items, at least let's send them through a central source. We try to give up this money and have some accountability. That sound good for everybody? Moving on. The town's coming to ask. I think your point is well taken. All right. I think we've covered everybody. You all man?
So when is the town going to answer?
They don't know.
Because, because I have to, I need a capital appropriation on the ERP system next meeting. So I do, I mean, I use, I can take more out of this if you want. If you want more leftover, I'll reduce the ERP system even more. But I need to, I, I mean, next, by, by next appropriation, by the next meeting, I need to know how much I can use for cares and how much I can, how much I need to take out of that.
It is definitely not going to be there by the next meeting. It will be there maybe by the first meeting in November.
I'm saying, I mean, I'm saying, there's only $15,000 left right now.
Yeah.
And if you want that number to go up, I need to reduce my, I need to reduce my request on the ERP system. And I need to, I can't wait until they go.
There's no way that I can get the town or anybody here can get the town to accelerate that. Town has to work with those, thank you. Exactly right. Exactly right.
Well, do we have a range that's open?
It's going to be less than $7,000.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay.
I agree.
It's a small amount, but their lawyer and their new, the newer, have to come up with a budget and it has to go in front of the town council. They have to vote on it. As soon as they can do that, it's the first Thursday in November.
And that's the total request?
Exactly.
Because I think they are the answer.
About 4700.
But they got like 4900 bucks.
Yeah.
So if you need to freeze this, come back in November, first being in November and we'll talk about care. Anything else for him, Jack?
No, other than bottom line is when the money's gone, the money's gone too. So I'm right.
So, so the bottom line isn't that with things where there's already.
Oh, I understand.
There's, if you have a purchase order out there, bottom line is that you got to pay for it, whether you pay for it with cares or not. You're, you're in the, you're out of pocket.
Right. So you got to stop cutting P up.
All right. We've already done, thank you. Cares continues to be so much money. We've already done the committee vacancies. Mr. J, what does the animal show fall? Not going to be quick. Bird up.
All right. Just for the record, we do not have any mountain lions and maybe Marty's way of that level. So in front of you, everybody should have a current revised shelter, public shelter, animal shelter operations meeting. Put this out, present this to Jack September the 18th, 2020. We've added, taken out what we felt was necessary. So just go through and highlight some of the changes. I'm sure everyone has read it, but like the 10th time. But first you would notice the title is changed. We changed the title since we cannot use the term hound or shelter anymore. On paper, we have to address it as the public animal shelter. Basically, all that means is we're operated by the Commonwealth and we're not a private animal shelter like Humane Society or SPCA. Next, we removed the word staff, author of the policy, since we're going to be fulfilling the animal shelter manager soon. We felt it was appropriate to, pretty much direct everything, direct policy to the shelter instead of the kennel staff. Next, we, some of the changes that we included was hours that we will be open to the public. We have reduced those hours from 29 hours down to 23 hours. So it's six hour difference, but we wanted to accommodate the hours that were open to the public when the shelter manager would be there. The shelter manager can help the public direct instead of the kennel staff. Pretty much just like the last two policies, animal control policy, I've brought in front of you, medical protocol. We revised it, updated it. So it's up to date, current with today's laws, regulations set forth by the state, including outdoor enclosures, tethering, code sections, et cetera. And just for the record, I've been working with this with Jack, Carissa, Sean, off and on. Each policy seemed like it's, it's taken like three months total on each policy. I have contacted these, and three individuals, even on weekends, Sundays, send them an email when I'm reviewing it. They would answer back right quickly. Spoke to some of the board members about the policy and so just wanted to thank you all for, you know, just trying to, with that being said, you know, just being patient with us and bringing in your ideas and everything. So I think what we have in front of you is pretty much a revised copy that we're happy with instead of what we currently have.
Our question's going to run on you and Phil Paul.
So this is the third and final of these policies. What accelerated this at this point was we had a change in animal shelter, veterinary system, kennel assistance in there. So that caused us to accelerate this business about. So that, it caused us to accelerate this business about the animal shelter manager and this, this general policy. So that, that's why we tried to move it ahead, so you didn't see this all in December. So it's just obviously gonna be a busy time anyway, so. Recent, uh, practice on this is to present all this to the board, so I guess technically this is the first time you've seen it. The habit has been to, uh, put this layover, so there, if there's any comments from the community, you'll have that. Turn it away if you're comfortable with it, uh, that could be approved, that could be approved. This one is driven by the county, um, I think we're very well regulated when it comes to animal patrol laws, the regs policy, as it were, and the shelter medical policy. Those are very, very well implemented. This has things like, um, procedures for how staff operates. This is more of an internal document, although we did have to meet these rules like, uh, like Rex says, we just can't call it bound anymore. With the modern times.
Yeah, this has been out there so long, I mean, I read a draft of this, uh, six months ago or so, probably, right? And Clarissa, you, you, you're comfortable, uh, Mr. Greg, Sean, you're comfortable? Um, with, with the changes that Greg just, just gave us right there. I mean, and the draft has also been out there on the website for a long time. I, I see no reason why we should delay this any longer.
It takes a village, thank you everybody that's worked, doing it on this. Uh, hopefully the animals, the public animal shelter.
Yeah.
Don't care, uh, we need to pass this thing online and be done with this. I mean, we've been working on it, as I said, we have been dragging everybody else, so let's move on.
It's one, one last question though, Greg. So, the, the public animal shelter will not be open unless the, the manager is there?
Correct.
Okay, so the managers, a manager, the manager's gonna be there whenever it's open.
Right, it'll go back to the way it used to be back in two thousand eight. The shelter manager will take full responsibility in dealing with the public directly instead of off and on with the kennel staff.
Right.
Whoever's on duty that day. So the shelter manager will take full responsibility.
What are your thoughts?
Second.
Which is maiden second, further discussion? Here in all our papers, you can probably say no.
Alright.
Um, Greg, Greg may have a lot of people credit for, but Greg carried the ball, buddy to you.
Yep. Alright, um, we've done Tracy's economic development grant program, thank you. Um, we've done the care, I think, couldn't talk about that anymore. Anything you'd like to tell us about plenty of software?
I don't have that much more to tell you than the last two meetings. It was basically four, providing three pieces of software. It involves five different things. Three pieces of software, a, a consulting contract, and hardware. And so, and the, the IT infrastructure, it's hardware, software, and, and, and stadium. We were told originally that the, our goal was to have, we need to kind of that all placed by the end of October. The actual physical infrastructure of the server rooms that we need. Uh, all of that procurement has been done, and it's indicated actually on my care schedule. It involved purchases from Dell, A and S, and a company called Humitrends. And, um, the Dell, uh, equipment has shipped, and A and S is currently working on. There's, there's an issue, um, there's electrical work that needs to be done in the server room before they can actually install them, I don't know, I, I don't know what the timing is.
I'm gonna need to call them or turn up the.
Yeah, I mean, we're still working, but that, that's in the works. So in terms of the physical stuff, um, I think we're ready to go. And Sean, I've gotten comments back from everyone on all of the contracts. And I just need to kind of collate them and get a resolution on all of them. And, uh, I, my goal is, and my understanding is, is that I'm supposed to work with Sean on that and that none of that has to come back. None of the numbers, just, none of the numbers that I reviewed several weeks ago have, none of the numbers on any of the software contracts have changed. There were some small changes, and actually I think they were netted down to less than five thousand dollars. In the IT costs, in the, the infrastructure costs, that's it. And that's all I have to say.
Do you have any questions?
Besides the fact that I get emails from all the software rooms every two days asking, and they're running together. I did it, that's what I did.
Alright, good, moving on. Um, Mr. Gordon, tell us about you from Public Safety, Antenna Site, please.
Uh, we negotiated this down. They, um, it's a steep price, I know that about that, but the, uh, the infrastructure that we already have in place uh, to put the shelter and cable bridges and things of that nature. We've got it to about as good as we can get it. I feel comfortable with this, uh, Mr. Greg, look at it, uh, look at it. Uh, this is how, and three of us, and it went right to one.
So, if you have any.
No, this, this will completely take care of one, uh, antenna site, uh, the county homes and real estate on another. There's not a lot we can do with RIC, uh, like you said, until we get further along in the engineering, so I would ask that you approve that this, this evening, and then we'll switch and work, uh, for more on the, uh, site.
Greg.
I agree with Mr. Pauls.
Questions, comments, thoughts, emotions, going forward, we all want it.
So I, help me with the motion, but I'll, I'll put something out there. So I would move to approve the first amendment to the, um, Upron Public Safety Antenna Site lease agreement as presented.
Second.
Question's maiden second, does that work as a motion, Mr. Greg? Very good, very good. Question's maiden second, further discussion? Here in all our papers, you can probably say no.
I agree.
Same song. Thank you. Um, we've moved the renovation project down, uh, it's a lot of things, but depending upon one budget adjustment.
Yes, um, there's, uh, all these lists of things we need to do, uh, and starting, throwing together, uh, just a running list of different things, but, um, this evening you agreed to hire four additional employees. Uh, we need to, uh, budget for the, the common attorney position and get that officially approved through an appropriation. Uh, there's this employee assistance program, I think you gave not approval on that, so we'll get on that as soon as possible. Um, there's the accounts payable position upgrade that's gonna cost money. Um, the financial software and the public safety radio, uh, tower lease, uh, stuff is, it's gonna cost money. On the capital project side, the, uh, radio project, uh, we, uh, there's still a lot of uncertainty with all of that. Uh, we do hope to have some of the paid-for grants, but you can't exactly count on that, so that's, that's all still in play. Then we'll have a report later on on this, uh, instructions in the project. Um, I guess the, the message here is that, uh, we are spending an awful lot of money that's not in the budget, and so you're gonna see some appropriations. Kept your appropriation numbers coming from this. This is no secret, you heard most of this last, last week, but, um, I believe what we need to do now is, is move forward on making all these things happen, but we'll have to nail down the numbers to work official appropriation for what's.
Any questions, Mr. Paul?
No, I guess most, most of the labor is, is gonna be probably, uh, half a year of labor, right? But yeah, I mean, all, all the, um, I just, I was just messing with it, looks like with the new positions, with benefits, you're talking three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per, for a full year, I would say.
Well, um, going back to your comment about MS and aging population, you know.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I just wanna make sure there's, nobody act surprised, and I, and I wanted to, and we.
Oh, no.
Pass for the official vote, we've already hired people.
Any other questions, don't know? Alright, um, any other old business on this? Still the new business. Um, uh, through January fourth.
Yes, um, and this, this comes up every year, but we have, uh, a series of holidays that, that hit us between October and, and January, and so to, uh, end out the year, we have all these meetings stacked in amongst these holidays. And I want to point out that, um, the second November meeting falls on Thanksgiving week, and the second December meeting falls on Christmas week. So just wanna make sure everybody's aware of that, so there's no surprises later on when somebody's counting on a meeting and other folks want to talk about canceling the moving meeting. So now's the time to talk about it, in my opinion. My suggestion has been to, uh, consider, um, one meeting in November and one meeting in December, maybe go to the third, third week for each. But, um, there is an awful lot of business in front of the board, so my theory is, one longer meeting is better than two long meetings.
I, um.
And, and you don't have to make this decision this evening, it's, it's just a matter of planning.
Think about it, let's make your schedule in, uh, at the second meeting in October. I do see us having a lot of business.
Yeah.
Me placing the second meeting in December, uh, would seem appropriate, if everybody's tied into the holiday feelings. Uh, but as far as November goes, I don't think I would do without two meetings. Yeah, without the meeting, we've got so much stuff on, we can't do it. You do it, it'll be a bunch of. Let's talk about it again on, on October, sorry. Anybody else? Alright, um, information for Paul.
Thank you, Bob.
Uh, yes, Mr. Wilson dropped off, uh, these correspondence earlier, um, we'll get that to you. It's to the effect that, uh, everybody, uh, has agreed to the work up on, uh, Weather's Lane, uh, as reported a meeting or two ago, but board approved the work, so we're forward with that.
We, we are ignoring his change of mind?
Well, not only Mr. Whitney, but other neighbors have.
They're having a meeting tomorrow at two, um, I talked to Matt, he already asked me to run up there, I said, sure. So.
Yeah.
So we're gonna go out there, we'll see what everybody has to say, and I'll have a report for you in a couple weeks. But right now, let's see what they have to say, stay on the board back. I don't even know where, but, yeah, acknowledge. What else?
And we are taking, uh, correspondence periodically about the, uh, Kirklandville Swinging Bridge. Um, I guess, so the rise is screening most of that, but, uh, there is a lot of interest, and we've asked people to, um, well, please do comment if you're inclined, but the, the meeting on that, uh, where facts might be known on the twenty-seventh, so we do expect a few people to be here on the twenty-seventh.
Just for clarity purposes, isn't it fairly easy to say that the board of supervisors is in favor of preserving these swinging bridges? There you go. What else you got, huh?
I think I'm good.
I'll go. Alright, anything else? Public comment? Yes, man. Yes, Brian.
Newer old system?
Yeah.
Or mix?
Yeah.
The old one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Robin Brown, I live in Madison. Much, some of it was easier to hear tonight, it, the loudness and the clarity sort of was not consistent. Um, what else? You might, I, I noticed that there's a renovation project going on for this building, and you might want to consider sound buffers on the wall to help with, with the sound. The only other thing that is that when people are wearing masks and speaking, um, sound is reduced eight to twenty decibels when wearing a mask. So the gentleman who spoke, while he was loud enough, he wasn't clear. So everything he said, I was like, um, but basically the, the loudness and the clarity was not consistent. You play, I could hear most of the night. Sometimes you faded, but you're still, you're still clear. The people in the back, they were inconsistently. They, they, the sound was picked up, but not necessarily all the time. It sort of flipped in and flipped out. Amber, you have to either speak into it or speak up.
It's not working.
Um, then you have to speak up, because I couldn't hear anything you said either. Kevin, you did better. Cardi, I haven't heard you before, so I don't know, but I heard most of what you said. Mr. Habs, you mumble, so you're gonna have to speak into the microphone more. Ms. Costello, when you use the mic, you're great, when you don't use the mic, I'll hear anything you say. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. In the designs, we have taken into account sound in this room, and I believe there's panels.
Yes, sir.
And we're talking modified equipment that in from, I don't know, what is, what are those speakers, like nineteen sixty-eight or something? Uh, so it should get better near soon, Mr. Brown. Other public comment? Just Mitch.
And, thank you, Mr. Chairman. While I'm going to the mic, I will say that I, I am seventy years old, I, I do have diesel engineered ears, but I was able to hear all of you, so I'd like to thank you for that. I'm Gary Mish, I'm from Syria, or at least lately. I wanted to talk about the, uh, the broadband issue, uh, which the gentleman brought up. Uh, I, I didn't hear much about his proposals, I wouldn't mind, uh, his sending them to me. It, it sounded to me like most of the concern was about, uh, the, the government's connectivity, as far as from the, uh, from the board's point of view. Uh, I, as I said, I live in Syria where, uh, our idea of broadband is, uh, not, not good.
Two hundred and thirty.
Yeah, I, I will say though, that Jimmy Gray's being, uh, aware that he wasn't, uh, making a whole lot of progress paying AT&amp;T, or I'm sorry, Verizon to bring, uh, uh, fiber in, uh, about this thick, okay? I know it because it was hanging down on a pole one day, and I wanted to make sure it wasn't a live wire. So I picked it up, and sure enough, it was fiber.
Not a good way to test if it's a live wire. Just start calling it. I, I, I wanna make sure everybody's on, hey, keep going.
I got the electrical engineering side to it, I'm right careful, but I, I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. And, and, uh, Gray's brought that up to the lodge, because they knew to compete, they were gonna have to have themselves a, a good convention business. So I knew that cable wasn't going to my house up in Weekly Hollow. Um, and, and I, I, I contacted Verizon, I wanted to know what it would take to bring that, uh, a little bit of that cable up my way, and they said about fifteen thousand dollars, and I said, when can you start? And they said, never. Okay, so, and that's not a joke. Okay, I, I have another ham radio buddy in another part of Madison County, and he, he saw a Verizon, uh, fiber termination box, and he asked the same question. And they told him fifteen thousand dollars, I'm not making a joke here. He said, when can you start? And they, they, they said they get back to him, and, and they called him, and they said, never. So you get an idea of where the broadband companies' hearts are, they don't have any. Uh, but the, I think my point is that unless our government gets behind this somehow for the individual residents, nothing's gonna happen. Uh, and I understand that given the timeframe and the amount of money here, you, you really can't do much for the individual residents, no matter what you do. But i- in the midterm even, unless you do something, nothing much is gonna happen, so anything you. even, unless you do something, nothing much is going to happen. So anything you can do for us, we'd appreciate. We'd like you very much. So thank you.
Other public comment? Other public. I will point out, that is the way to project your sound right there. Thank you, Mr. Mish. Uh, all right. Anybody else? You have questions?
I don't tell anything.
What? Oh, sorry. Climb on. Be climbing.
Why, why do we still have a half broken microphone system here? I've been coming to these meetings for three years now and every time I come here, microphones are broken. Yours is broken. It's this one. It's that one. This is not a hard one yourself.
The chairman doesn't need one.
We, we are. We, we understand we have efficiencies here. The school will ask us, the school asked me way on early in COVID, well, how are we going to stream the meetings? I said, well, our internet is much slower than yours. I said, well, why is that? Because we think the priority on such expenses should be the schools, which is appropriate. I really feel that way. On this, we're just about to go down the renovation process, which has only taken 45 years. Um, soon there will be a system in here that will amplify sound to a point where everybody can hear and it will not be an issue. Spending good money over bat on something that we tried with these and we know, we know they'll gamble, push these very, very hard. Uh, and we got, they worked about halfway. We've got an issue. We're trying to take the right steps and put your money where it needs to be and come up with the solution this last night. Any public comment?
That's good. Yeah.
Very good.
Good.
So often, please.
I move to the board command of code setting for some code session. Two, actually for 7/11, 8/20, negotiation for law discussion under warrant, public contract, passing and administration of the center renovation project. Two, discussion on removal of rent and understanding with Madison and the rescue squad, voting which involved expansion of other funds and discussion of the, 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 discussions, the, 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 the,